All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is 7:04 on Tuesday, February 26, 2019. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Sato.
Here.
Etac.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanzick.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley. Ewer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, I think we do have a quorum to conduct the regular business. Item number two is a reminder for everyone to please use the microphone so that everybody in the audience and everybody at home can hear us, along with the fact that it'll be recorded very well for future reference. And if anybody from the audience wants to address us when you come up to the podium, please make sure the microphone is adjusted to the right height for you so that we can get you recorded also, and we can all hear you. Item number three is approval of the minutes for February 12, 2019. Anybody have any questions or comments on those minutes? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chanzick, second by Serone, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Motion's carried. That'll go to City Council for approval. Item four is items to be removed, added, or changed. Laura, we have none, correct?
None.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. We're gonna go on then to item number five, which is a public hearing, and that is called the order for the purpose of the annexation agreement for the property located at 2,500 37 W 330 McKee Street, and that is for the annexation agreement for what is known as Landmeyer Property. So if anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to make a statement on for this annexation agreement or give testimony, you need to come up to the podium and you can do that, just that. Okay, I see nobody wishing to speak, so Alderman Stark, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Serone, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number six is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody in the public has anything they'd like to address us on for an item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the podium. If you're here to address us for an item that is on the agenda, what we commonly do is we bring the item up, whoever is the chair of that committee that it would fall under would present the item, we would have some discussion on the council level here, the committee level, we would then turn it over to the petitioner. The petitioner could present to us, we would have discussion, comments, questions between ourselves and/or staff, and then, of course, we would recognize anybody from the public that wishes to address us on whatever item we're discussing. In order to do that, just try to get my attention, which I'll be kinda watching, that's my job sitting here, to kinda watch to see if anybody wants to address us, and I'll make sure that I call on you to get you up here to address us. So, the next item then is item number seven, which is the Winding Creek, 2,500 and 37 W 330 McKee Street, and MI Homes is the petitioner slash applicant. Alderman Stark, you wanna present this?
Sure. We received a draft ordinance to be considered for this, the parcel of land that Alderman Brown just mentioned. MI Homes of Chicago is the contract purchaser of the property, and they've submitted applications of annexation and entitlement for the development, and it's about 69 acres of land located on the north side of McKee Street at Deer Path Road. The site extends north from McKee Street to the McKee Tributary-Brayburn West property and fills the city boundary gap between the Trout Farm and Heritage Ridge subdivisions. The current use of the property is farmland, zoned F farming, and under Kane County jurisdiction. A portion of the site is improved with cellular communication towers installed under Kane County jurisdiction, and this was brought before the Plan Commission on December 6. The City Council reviewed these development proposals back in 2013, and going all the way back to the mid 2000s, Faganol Builders proposed Batavia Reserve, a project of 44 single-family homes and 93 townhouses, and withdrew that application in 2009 because the Plan Commission did not give them a favorable recommendation. And now, Winding Creek proposes 113 single-family residence slots covering approximately 32 acres to be zoned, R1M, single-family, medium-density, all meeting the minimum required 60-foot width and 7,200 square feet. Eighty-eight townhome units will be built there, and 19 of those buildings will have four units and two buildings will have six units. The development connects Deer Path Road to Branson Drive and Thorne Street to Walcott Lane and would extend Mill Street into the development. Twenty acres of the site would be open, a 5.6-acre site would be donated to the Geneva Park District, and two and a half acres would be added to the city's Brayburn West property. There would be an HOA of open space lots that are proposed for amenities such as trails and stormwater management areas. This ordinance authorizes execution of the annexation agreement, and some terms of note are, there's a city obligation to annex and approve development entitlements, applying the planned development overlay and modification to the requirements of the zoning code and granting variations to the subdivision regulations, allowing phased development with substantial build-out within five years, construction of a bridge over the McKee Tributary to connect with Branson Drive, HOA maintenance and snow plowing of Calco Way and Parkview Court, the park land cash requirement of the city subdivision regulations would be fulfilled by the proposed 5.6-acre Geneva Park District site, city ownership of the property containing the existing cell towers, and that way we'll have control of better long-term management use of that property. Ordinance 1907 amends the land use map of the comprehensive plan. There is a state-of-Illinois statutory requirement that a comprehensive plan be amended no more than 90 days after the public hearing, so in the next 90 days, of course, staff will be working on that. So, Plan Commission held a public hearing on December 12. Nine audience members spoke. There were some concerns about increased traffic in the area, there were concerns about the Deer Path Main Intersection improvements and potential for vehicles cutting through adjacent neighborhoods. Another speaker explained the number of zoning code modifications and subdivision regulation variations are excessive and none would be granted as zoning code variances for existing residences. One speaker stated that it's important for the city to consider what the public says at hearings, meetings regarding comprehensive plan amendments. In response to the concerns, Greg Collins of MI Homes Land Acquisition noted that the Batavia Reeves plans extensively for conformance to the county stormwater management requirements. Part of the Brayburn West stormwater management system is located on the Winding Creek property. So, when it comes down to it, the Plan Commission recommended the City Council amend the comprehensive plan, use map as proposed. Staff notes that, as specified in the draft annexation agreement, City Council review and action on annexing the property plus subdivision and applying the various zoning districts with a PD overlay would be undertaken after MI requires the property. Our alternatives would be a pro, which the alternatives, if we voted to annexes, the ordinance approvals would allow for future annexation of territory to close the gap of unincorporated land on McKee Street west of Randall. Approval would also allow the project to move forward, providing land uses long envisioned in the comprehensive plan. Additionally, this project will provide for the connection of Branson Drive to Deer Path Road is required in the Fabian Access Intergovernmental Agreement and allow the city to do, to better control long-term use of the cell tower site. The cons, not approving the ordinances would result in the subject property remaining unincorporated and most likely not being developed as specified at this time. The city will lose its opportunity to acquire the cell phone tower site and the expanded area for the Brayburn Marsh. Not approving ordinance 1907 will require a new public hearing to be conducted to consider the land use amendment. Budget impact, annexation, and development as proposed would add to the city's real estate tax base. Additional city residents may patronize Batavia businesses, improving the health of these businesses and adding to the city's sales tax receipts. Staff has not identified a need to add staff for this, and additional staff time is going to be required for maintenance of the newly acquired roadway rights of way. Timeline, MI is requesting Cowan Council action on the annexation agreement and amending the land use map so they can move forward acquiring the property. So, they're looking to get this done sooner versus later, as soon as the 18th of March meeting, if possible. So, recommendation from the Plan Commission by a vote of five to zero, one absent, one seat vacant, they recommend the City Council's approval to amend the comprehensive plan use map as proposed, subject to parks and open space land, use classification being applied to the park, donation site, and open space and stormwater management outlets. They don't make a recommendation on annexation agreements, and staff, again, notes the Commission approved design review and recommended approval of preliminary plot of subdivision and amendments to the zoning map. So, that is the quick version of this very long memo regarding the subdivision that we seem, we looked at this, which seems like such a long time ago, that I'm so glad it's finally in front of us again. Joel, did you have anything to add?
A couple of things. MI Homes is represented this evening, and they can go through some of the highlights of what the development would actually look like. I do wanna note that in all the shuffling of the exhibits, we put in a, an exhibit for the fees, which is not the exhibit that we intended to be there. The exhibit, we can have a revised exhibit for the fees available for the March 18 Council review, or you can direct staff to return for further discussion of the agreement, if you wish, at the next Cowan meeting, and we can present the revised fees, fee sheet then. I've talked with MI Homes, and they're agreeable to work with staff to get the correct fee sheet in there that we had negotiated before.
Susan, point of clarity, and maybe Joel, you can answer this, 'cause you touched on it briefly, Susan. The 90-day time period from when the clock started ticking with Plan Commission, you mentioned that staff will be working on this for the next 90 days, but point of clarity is, the 90-day clock has been ticking, and it needs to be taken care of here by the March 18 meeting, correct?
No, the comprehensive plan amendment needs to be approved by the City Council no, at their next meeting, which is March 4.
Right.
So, in order for that to take place, the Cowan would have to make a recommendation on the comprehensive plan amendment this evening. We're also looking for, if you would like, a recommendation on the annexation agreement, and it can include any conditions that you would like or changes, for example, the exhibit, the fee exhibit.
Anyone else from the council have questions of Joel? Should we have the developer come up and give us the high-level overview again? That would be great if they would. If you could give your name and company name for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Greg Collins with MI Homes. We are the contract purchaser. It's actually an assemblage of properties. Let me open up the presentation. I have several slides we can go through. Hey, Joel? You got, you got it on here?
Is Howard still here?
I was working with Howard, and he was gonna have this all set up to run his PowerPoint. So, I'm not exactly sure. Batavia presentation?
Seems to gotta create an account on here. Okay.
I saw him doing it earlier.
Well, good old technology. We used to do, we used to have boards that we'd bring to every meeting, right?
Joel, you could probably go to the agenda, because all the drawings are on the agenda. If you just go to the list.
Yeah, maybe we can just go on the actual agenda.
Maybe not. Don't do that.
If you just log on with Batavia, Batavia, the content drawings, I put a file on the desk.
Give everybody a guess at her password. Everybody close your eyes.
I remember mine. I think mine is like something like "I'm almost done."
Oh, but going to the location house because of mine. It was a lot easier when it was 203 WA.
Okay. I think mine is "I'm almost done."
With an M.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
First time in a long time.
See what happens when you leave?
There you go.
Right when he shows up, it's a miracle.
I double-click it, maybe it's picking. There, I think so, there you go.
Gonna come up better.
Ta-da.
All right.
Yay.
It works even. No need to present.
All right. Technical difficulties. Just, yeah, to give you some context, I think people are very familiar with where the subject property is located, and as I said, it's actually an assemblage of two properties, one 66 acres and one 3, to, and in total, then 69 acres. They're all separate ownership. The reference to Landmeyer Farm, of course, is the 66 acres that is, that is being farmed today, and then there's a small homestead property, it used to be a small homestead property on there that's owned by a different entity. Some of the things that we outlined with the Plan Commission, as it related to the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan and some of the goals and objectives of that regarding abundant supply of parks and open space, the balance of active and passive open spaces, as you see in the plan, with connection points to both passive and active recreational areas, you know, cohesive interconnected transportation network, safe and attractive routes of travel, and to have new development, most importantly, new development pay its own way. I know one of the biggest issues financially was, you know, the ultimate, the design and construction of the bridge across the McKee Tributary area, and yes, we will be doing that as part of this project. Just real quickly, some of the planning factors that get you to the plan that we have, you've probably seen this, the same iteration of plans, you know, as developers, you almost come up with the same limitations and as where certain uses can go, and this is the existing conditions of where you see the topography, the red being the kinda the top of the, top of the hill, right? And you can see where stormwater wants to go, and hence, you have wetland areas here in the northwest, excuse me, in the northwest corner, and therefore, as you get to the plan, you can see as we design this site, it wraps around that hill, and at the top of the hill, we have a park, and we've circled that with a row of townhomes. So, the plan is very simple in its design in terms of interconnection of the streets. You connect Deer Path north to Branson, connecting, you know, continuing and allowing that north-south connection to finally occur. We then have a lot of connection points, both east and west, based on the existing subdivisions that are there today, so that we can, again, bring a road across and also connect Mill out to, out to Randall Road. Wetland areas, as well as detention ponds next to those, again, where the stormwater wants to go, in the southwest corner and in the northwest corner, we also have a small pond in the northeast corner, so this entire stretch on the north, which is a combination of open space and floodplain, as well as stormwater management, which will ultimately then be deeded to the city, this particular section. The rest of it will be managed by an HOA, except for, as you will see later, I have a little slide showing the park area, which will be, we've worked out an agreement with the park to dedicate them approximately five-plus acres. But, townhomes, in terms of land use planning, will be adjacent to existing townhomes to the east, and then progresses to, you know, the simple, straightforward subdivision design with, with the single families transitioning down to the open space. This gives you an idea of the context of the single-family area here. We have a couple lots in the beginning here, which will be model lots at the beginning, or at the, at the front entrance to the community, or what I, we consider the front entrance to the community, or the window off of McKee, which seems to make the most sense. Townhomes, as I mentioned, again, adjacent to the existing townhomes to the east. These are two- and three-bedroom townhomes, approximately 1,500 to 2,100 square feet. One of the, out of the four-floor plans, we'll have one that is a, designed as a master bedroom on the first floor to accommodate that buyer profile. The 20 acres of open space referenced before, again, you've got a combination of both passive and active space. This little diagram in the corner, in the southwest corner, gives you an idea of the park space that we ultimately will dedicate to the park, and this is mine, is what we're calling Outlet M, which would be the existing cell tower, as well as the easement or the road, new road alignment for access to that tower location. So, the dedication will not incorporate that, of course, and it'll incorporate the land around that. The idea is then, they have a plan in place, or at least, it's not a final design or anything, to have hardscape and a playground element at this corner of the community, and the rest of it will be probably passive in nature, no activities planned at this point. We connect the bike path north to south. One of the things we worked out with staff was to carry this bike path north through the community. This is what the bold red line shows, up to this intersection here had left, and then actually then, through an easement, through the Brayburn Marsh area, and the HOA will maintain this, this pathway, but we then, you know, come off the actual public street and then bring that bike path all the way north to a road that connects across. So, a real nice feature, folks, to, you know, one, north and south of the community to come through and actually be able to enjoy the Brayburn Marsh a little bit, 'cause there's now access to it. So, getting rid of that limitation, I think, is a really nice feature. You can see the different two, this is a, it's passive with a little bit of hardscape features that we created. We created this, and this will be maintained by the HOA. This is a park, just over an acre, it's a nice space across from the, this, what we're calling Parkway Court, which will be a street that will maintain, be maintained by the HOA. But this is to help break up the monotony that sometimes you get with a long stretch of townhomes, 'cause you can see as the way we designed them on the east side of the road is a lot different on the west, and we broke that up with a, with an open space park, and then we intend on putting some hardscape features in. There's designs of this in your plans to show you what that is, but it's a passive bench, trellis seating area. We also, to connect, you know, not just a bike path, but the interconnection of sidewalks north to south on the east side of Deer Path as extended, we then introduce another open space feature at Calico Court here for a little, little stop, that someone can, you know, stop and enjoy themselves here on the way north to south within the community. We've got five different plans for this portfolio of homes that we've introduced for the single family. Again, these, these range in square footage. We go from, I think, 3,500 square feet down to 2,500 square feet. You'll see sales prices, we anticipate, you know, mid-3s up to the 4s. We've designed to incorporate as much as the design elements that Batavia expects at their single family with respect to garage setbacks, ornamentation of roof lines, different design elements, two-front elevations, so we've introduced Urban Farmhouse, we've introduced all sorts of different architectural nomenclature for a particular elevation, so that we can make sure that we can differentiate both monotony in color and use of materials as best we can, and as well as keeping that garage dominance off the street. So, we've introduced both porch elements on all the elevations, more or less, or a covered entry, and then really nice material use, vertical siding, and a lot of different elements to, again, break up that monotony in color. This gives you an idea of the townhome elevations. We, we always have a, you know, a first level of brick across the front, and we carry that then in a way, scotting around the sides. Just a straightforward, good-looking, and it's tough to see on the screen, but we, in our gable lens, especially in the front, there's a different texture and design and color for this front element here, and so we eliminate the siding and go to a shake siding condition here, and we carry out to the side, so you can see, in this gable end here, you'll see the little triangle up in the top of the gable. Again, to carry this element around to the side, as well as in the rear, you'll see this feature here, again, to help break up that, that elevation. That's it, it's quick. I'm sure you got a lot of questions. More than happy to, I have an engineer here, I've got a land planner, a landscape designer. We spent a lot of time on landscape design to make sure that both the transition between the townhomes and the single family are appropriate, as well as perimeter landscaping, as well as internal landscaping with our open space, but we worked well with staff, we've come a long way, and this is what we got.
Great, thank you so much. When would you, if this is all approved, when would you expect to start building the models?
Well, we're at preliminary, so we would now need to final design it. I'm sure staff is very fast on their final design.
Always.
Review, but we anticipate then a, probably late summer.
This year?
Yes. Yes.
Anyone in the council have any questions?
With the phasing of this project, would the roads all go in at once? And the connection on that bridge, when is that?
Yeah, we, well, we worked out, because, because of the size of it and the expense, we wouldn't be building it all at once, and to get to this far corner, I don't need to be there day one, to your point, but we worked out, and you'll see in the language in the annexation agreement, is by the 100th permit, so it ties me to a performance, but doesn't make me have to do it day one for that sheer cost expense.
You wanna get that out for the public?
Right.
Because I think that's something that they may be.
Correct.
Worsted about, especially everybody that's lived over there around this.
Right, so when they see activity, right, folks on the other side, this, that connection's not gonna be made that first day, right? They're all worried that all of a sudden now there's a different flow of traffic. To be honest, it's gonna be probably going east, to connect to Randall finally, but it'll be a nice, it'll be a nice connection.
Do you know where you would phase it, Greg?
When?
Where? Where would your phase line be on there?
For the initial phase, and looking at the utilities, you can do like this and connect utilities for a handful of single families and townhomes, so two different, almost two different stores in a sense. So, obviously, the identity here, making these road connections, so you have two ways in and out, and then proper water main looping, so it's the southern end first, not to mention, I wanna get that park site up and running so that we can deed it. Improvements go in, 'cause for us, that's also important, and for buyers to, they see park on the plan, the next thing the question is, when is it going in? And that's probably the first phase there.
Okay.
So, I forgot to check before I came to the meeting. Do you know if the Geneva School District Line is super close to this property, or is this all Batavia?
No, it's all Batavia. I think it's just right north.
The line is really close.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is all Batavia.
And then, just speaking in general about impact fees, whether you can answer this or not, we as a council recently reviewed our impact fees. I'm just curious if you thought that they were reasonable, or, reasonable or onerous? Because clearly you have a very robust subdivision here.
Yeah, your fees are hefty. I mean, they are. They're, they're, I mean, they're, they're not insignificant.
And compared to other communities nearby, it's were actually lower.
It may be. I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, in terms of where we're working in, it ranges. I mean, there's, we're paying close to all-in with permits and impacts, almost $30,000 in Lake Zurich, and this is well into the 20s. And, yeah, these are per unit, and that's how, I mean, other communities, I'm paying eight, so it just, it's a huge issue for, for, you know, home building, just to kinda find out where you, you got your hard costs, you got everything else, and the big variable, land is one of them, and then kinda fee structure is the other.
When you were talking about the townhouses, when you said there'll be units that have a first-floor master?
Correct, one of them.
One unit total in all of those?
Out of the four-floor plans, one of them. So, you can, we can guarantee almost one per building.
Okay.
I think I have 28 buildings.
And, and what was the price range on the townhouses?
They're gonna be starting in the mid-2s, so depending on what folks option out, lot premiums, mid-2s on a.
Mike?
So, you're introducing a lot of hardscape, and so where does the, I guess, rain runoff go?
Let me get to... So, in green are the detention ponds?
Right.
Okay, so, and we spent months and months and months and months designing the stormwater for the site. This is a stormwater design that also incorporates how the Brayburn Marsh was designed, because it's a, properties along this stretch actually benefit by the Brayburn Marsh. There's a, some of the storage that would go typically on our site is incorporated into that Brayburn Marsh, so there's all sorts of calculation, design elements, but we figured all that out, as well as pay for it. And so, like I showed before, this here, you can see, I'm sorry, that red dashed line?
Right.
That's the drainage device, okay? So, you'll see this quadrant here, so anything hardscape in this quadrant goes down to this pond, everything over here comes to this pond, and everything up here goes to that pond.
Northeast.
Yep, so that's where, that's why we have, if you look, again, going back to this, the highlighted areas. Ultimately, this all then gets incorporated. Ultimately, this all then gets incorporated, you know, you're probably familiar with some of the stormwater regulations. We have to release it at a restricted rate.
Right.
And, but it all goes ultimately to the Braber and Marsh area.
So, I guess my concern is, and I have this discussion, it seems like every time we talk about something with staff, is that a lot of these designs are on a 10-year incident, a 10-year flood incident. And I'm of the belief that we ought to be designing things at least on a 50-year flood incident, because every day, the United States has some sort of weather catastrophe. And I have, I happen to personally think, weather, you know, climate change is upon us, we're not doing anything about it on the federal level. Hopefully, states and municipalities are going to start doing something towards it. But we are nonetheless going to all be victims of floodwaters. And are you doing anything in this design for that? And like, was this a 10-year model? Was this a?
I mean, my engineer can speak to all the different modeling that's done, but in terms of the extensive review, the extensive design, and the additional design that we have to do at a final level, you've got a great staff here, and they're very particular about their stormwater. So, we're not skirting any codes, and we are complying with all your regulations with respect to, and I would say that over the last 20, 25 years, stormwater design, stormwater calculations, know-how, best practices has completely changed to where what you have today is, is way more conservative than probably even 10 years ago. And so, all of those are incorporated into the design. You know, are all the pipes sized to 100-year events? No, some of them are. But, you know, in engineering speak or in engineering world, if you could design to hurricane status, or you can design to strong storm, you know, how do you want to do it? We comply with what regulations we have to comply with, and you guys are pretty conservative in good what you do. So, I think we've got a good stormwater design here.
I hope so. I'm doing a development myself right now, and we're, they're oversizing pipe to protect the community. And then I have this discussion with our staff all the time. I just think everyone, developers, staff, and municipalities, need to be more proactive towards it. So, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else in the council? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Since we had a public hearing, we really don't, should we, do you have any comments? Should we take any comments from the audience?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I wasn't sure.
So, if anybody from the public would like to address us regarding this proposal, all the annexation agreements, the other two items that we have on here, now would be a great time, if you want to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, and give us your concerns, we'd be happy to listen. Okay, Susan, it's back to you.
Okay. Seeing none. Would someone like to make a motion to, I want to make sure I get this right, to send a council ordinance 1906 authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by you or second by somebody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And then, would someone like to make a motion to send a city council ordinance 1907 amending the comprehensive plan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by you or second by somebody? All in favor?
Susan, before we go very far, I want to make sure we give staff direction that they can just give us the revised fee schedule.
Right.
Before we go to city council, we don't need to bring this back to committee?
No, absolutely.
And then, one other item I did want to bring up, Scott or Joel, is, and I don't really know the right place to put it or how to get it done, I can't recall how we did it with the Cambridge property, but where there's a stub street that's going to lead into a future street, particularly where that bridge is going to be, I think we should get a sign where the, that's why I asked where the phasing is going to stop or start, there should be a sign there that says, "Future Road Connection and Bridge." So, everyone's aware that moves into that community, that there's going to be a future connection going through. I requested that when we did the Cambridge property, and I think that worked out well, that people in the Cambridge property knew all along, when they bought there, because they drove up and down that street, that there was going to be a future bridge connection.
So, what you're saying is that the phase line, we already have, there's already a sign at the end of Branson right now?
On the Cambridge property, there is, yes.
So, you're saying, within this development, when they finish their phase-one streets, have signs at that point to say that this is going to be extended?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. I've seen the sign in the Cambridge development, and it makes total sense.
Okay. And I, I mean, I, we brought this up before, any development we do, I think, should have that. Okay, that's all I have.
No, that's fine. So, did we get, did we vote on the second part of this? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries.
So, ordinance 19-06 and 19-07 have passed unanimously going to city council for approval. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Regular agenda, and I'm sure the mayor will give you the opportunity to get up and talk about your development. And I just want to say that, after how many years we've been working on this?
Yes.
Since 2003, I think, with Faginell? Yeah.
When I got on the council.
So, I'm sure you guys are happier to see this done than I am, but I'm glad.
I rest in peace the first thing I got on the council.
Bye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, resolution 19-026-R authorizing execution of a design-engineering service agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for the amount not to exceed $379,204.32 for the Prairie Street Improvement Project. Alderman, Wolf.
Thank you. This is for the much anticipated Prairie Street Project. This will be the design-engineering services for it. There is a breakdown in the funding on it, if anybody wants to see that, it's in the memo. There is quite a difference in the budgeted amount and the required amount, actual amount required for phase due to design and the street improvement. Quite a savings there, which I was kind of shocked to see, that that's that low, so maybe you can explain that to us. And we've talked about this time and time again, about all the changes to the street, the one foot, the one 14-foot lane in each direction with a width of 30 feet on the street, and then a four-foot shared bike lane is included on both sides of the street, and five-foot sidewalks and all the utilities underneath the street will all be taken care of while it's apart. So, I kind of touched on the overview. Do you want to give us any info, Rahat?
No, thank you. You pretty much explained everything. The savings that you are saying, I want to touch base on that. With our experience with Main Street, we looked at the initial or preliminary engineering a second time or third time, if you want to say. We wanted to reduce number of properties that are going to be impacted with the temporary acquisition and right-of-way take. So, initially, we were looking at almost 26 properties that were going to be impacted, but when we looked at the design again, we were able to reduce it down to eight. So, that will save us quite a bit of money down the road. This is not all savings, even though it kind of appears that way. We'll probably spend about $10,000 or $15,000 out of this money as the temporary acquisition. So, when you, when you ask for land, you have to give them some money, but it's not typically more than $500, $2,000 per property. So, I'm expecting that out of that 135, we'll spend another $10,000. But, but there will be quite a bit of savings from, from our estimate. So, so just doing a value engineering, you know, looking at the preliminary engineering again and again, helped us reduce that number of properties that, that we are going to impact. So, so that's that. As Mayor has mentioned many times, this project is on a timeline. We have to get this project off the ground, meaning we have to let this project, or beat it out by October of 2020. So, our hope is that, that we'll be able to finish it up by January and, and go to the January letting. But we have some cushion in case something happens, and a property right-of-way acquisition takes longer, then, then we have a little bit of cushion there. So, having said that, you know, the council pretty much looked at this project a few weeks ago, you know, with, with bike path and all that, so we are very excited to move forward.
Almost as excited as everybody who drives down it on a daily basis. So, that is, anybody have any questions? Mark?
Rahat, with the savings, did you just choose that the street improvement should get, got all the savings, or was there a reason that the others were full budget, and then Streets was not the full budget? Could you have moved that around differently, or?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question.
All the savings is for the funding source of street improvements. Could that have been split between the three funds so that it, everybody got a little bit of money back, so to speak?
I, I think that's probably more of a Peggy question. Yes, I think, I think it could be done that way. It's, it's the money coming out of, you know, different parts, but it's overall city pot. So, we could, we could give that money back to, you know, MFT account and some to the water infrastructure. Yeah, it, it could be done.
Yeah, I just don't know if that would help the water infrastructure. Do you want to address?
The money will be paid out as the, as they're expended, if there's water, paid out water, if Streets is paid out Streets, you know, shifted generally.
So, so the water infrastructure, that's the design component, so I don't think that can be reduced, so let me take it back, because that's the portion of the water infrastructure design. So, that cannot be reduced. MFT, I, I guess we could split that up with, within MFT and Street Fund.
I just don't know if there's any benefit to do it any differently.
No. Yeah. I, I'm sorry, I take it back again. Water, we cannot, because that's a proportional share of waterfront to design the water infrastructure, so.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, would someone care to make a motion to recommend to council?
There is a comment from the audience.
Sure. Come on up. Problems of having the podium in front of you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Stevens. I live on South Prairie in Batavia, and I've been here all my life. I happen to own three, three parcels of, I have three parcels that are on the end of South Prairie, and I understand that, you know, you had your meeting the other week, but I'm still here to tell you, I'm concerned about the safety as you're getting to the end of South Prairie and Pine. It's, you know, to put these bikes coming through. And the other thing is, you're taking away our parking. You know, we've given up a lot, but, you know, in the middle of the block, you're going to tell me, I have to tell my company to go around the street and park? This is, you know, and I'm looking the other day at all the UPS and Amazon trucks that are coming. So, at one time, we had parking only on one side of the street, then it came to both sides of the street, okay? But to have nothing and have this bike path, and now have UPS, mail service, I mean, anybody can agree that this is just something of the future. There's going to be more and more of these trucks coming. Now, we're having the bike, the bike path, we already contend with bikers, and they're fine. You know, they should have a place to go. But that corner, and again, you'll probably say it's because I live in that corner, but maybe that's why I'm so concerned about it, because I see it. The cars don't stop now, and you can tell me it's a traffic issue. Either way, it's unsafe, and now we're going to have, we're going to have, we should have more bikers coming down, because we're really designating it. It's always been a biker thing, you know, and I've asked the bikers when they've stopped, and I've, you know, if you, if you were directed to a different road, would you go? Yeah, they'll go. We're going to go where we're going to go. Yet, they are. I just want it on the record, I'm really concerned about the parking being taken away. That's, that's a long jog. I actually think maybe I should invite everybody over in winter, in the middle of the day for lunch, and tell you to park around the corner, and then when you park, you won't be able to get back, because the snowplows will have come and plowed it on, on the sidewalk. We have a lot of walkers and stuff. I'm concerned about the idea. Thank you very much.
Nope.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to recommend resolution 1926-R to council?
So moved.
Motion by you or?
Second.
Second by Callahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so motion or resolution 19-026-R will go to the city council for approval. Consent agenda? No, let's talk about it.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about it, because it's something that, that everybody wants to hear about, when it's happening, what's going on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, discussion to proceed with the remediation of environmental contamination on the One North Washington redevelopment site. And then immediately after that, we've got two ordinances, ordinance 19-11, which is the environmental indemnification agreement for One Washington Place, and then ordinance 1912, the Second Amendment and related redevelopment agreement for the One Washington Place. And Alderman Stark, you going to start us with then?
Actually, I'm going to turn this first part of it right over to Laura. Okay. Since it's her memo.
Okay.
Of 107 pages. Please don't read it off.
It had attachments. The memo's on 107 pages, luckily. So, under the redevelopment agreement, the city had the responsibility as a condition precedent to the developer taking possession of the redevelopment site, that we would demolish all of the buildings, and that we would provide them with a remediated site. And so, in preparing to do that, the city took samples, and it was discovered that there were a few fields of contamination. One of those was acidic soils, but another one that was of greater concern were lead in the soil. And because the, the field of contamination that was identified, we knew, we knew from the consultant that it was going to cost us in excess of $350,000 to, to remediate the site and to put those soils in a special landfill. The redevelopment agreement called for the parties to sit down to discuss that matter and whether the costs of the remediation were so significant that it didn't make sense to go forward with the project. Over the course, this was back in May of 2018, when the contamination was first discovered. We have since had many meetings with the developer to discuss how we might both remediate the site and move forward with the project. In addition to that, we have asked our environmental consultant to see if they could better specify the size of the fields of contamination that needed to be brought to the special landfill so that we could understand what range of cost we were talking about. And we were able to do that, which reduced our expected expenses somewhat. But through this negotiation, it was determined that because a TIF area has a finite period of time of 23 years from its inception until it concludes, and that we are going to be, if we continue with the project, issuing the $16 million in, dollars in bonds, we would like to begin the project as soon as possible and have it take as short a time as possible to construct the project, so that we can get that incremental tax value going to pay off the, the bond payments. And therefore, the parties in mutual discussion determined that we could save some money and save some time by having the developer come in right away to complete the demolition of the remaining structures on the redevelopment site, and then also complete the remediation plan. In then also complete the remediation plan in conjunction with their overall excavation of the site. And so, that brings us to where we are today with these three decisions brought to you of, number one, whether the city wants to continue this project, given that it must bear the costs of remediation of the environmental contamination that's been discovered on the site. And then, two, in order for this project to move forward, for the developer to be able to seek financing for the project, the bank is requiring as a condition precedent that the city provide them with an environmental indemnification agreement. And what basically this environmental indemnification agreement says is that the city bears responsibility for any contamination that is on that site prior to its conveyance to the developer. Thirdly, if we agree that we would be willing to sign that environmental indemnification agreement, then there's the matter that we have now sort of flipped some of the responsibilities in the existing redevelopment agreement. And those things need to be accurately spelled out in the redevelopment agreement that exists between the parties. And so, that's the second amended and restated redevelopment agreement spells out that the developer is going to be the one who will be responsible for the demolition, excavation, and the remediation of the site. And in addition to that, it revises the timelines, the original timelines that were part of the project to reflect where we're at today. And I'd be willing to answer any questions that you might have about the 107 pages worth of documents that I provided to you.
Thank you. Dan?
So, I did read some good stuff. The three questions are largely rhetorical. The reason I say that, and again, I come from this saying I've generally been in favor of this project. Question number one asks, does the city wish to continue with the project if we have to bear these costs? Well, the property is ours. So, if we don't pay for it for Shodin's project, we'll be paying for it for the whatever goes up there. So, this seems like almost a rhetorical non-issue. The second question says regarding accepting liability, again, it's ours. So, we are going to have to accept responsibility for it. The third question, the changing of the RDA, that's where I have some bigger problems. One, if we did identify this back in May of 2018, here we are nine months later, the clock has been ticking on the TIF, and it seems that that damages the finances of this project. And then, secondly, the RDA also moves the goalpost now for the construction of the project or the demolition up to April of 2020. I don't see an occupancy permit being issued anytime before 2013, which erodes even, or I'm sorry, 2023, that erodes even more of the finances from this project. If this is a question for you or a question for Shodin, is this project still financially viable, given all of these delays?
I think I would turn that over to Dave to answer because he's got a vested interest in that.
You're correct, but there's a couple items, excuse me, there's a couple items that I think we need to understand. Let's make sure that we all know that we have not lost from May till today. We have just not lost all that time. So, everybody's aware and Laura didn't touch on it, but I think it's an important topic, is that there is currently an acronym, RAP, Remedial Action Plan, RAP, RAP, that has been submitted by the city to the IEP A. So, technically, until that RAP is approved, you can't, whether it's us doing the digging or the city doing the digging, that is being processed at the state level. So, the time has not, no time has been lost while we have been working on these documents. We agree that time when it comes to the TIF has been lost. And we went back and with some help with Peggy, we reran what we call our bond schedule. And yes, we have about a six-month at the very end, the last, we believe that over the $16 million, if we're going to do four different bond issuances, that last, or that fourth bond issuance, we're going to have a six-month, six months of non-TIF-able expense. So, that is a problem. We think we can, it's a negative, it's a negative number. We think we're still able to achieve that, but we need to, we need to keep moving. And because each day that we lose that occupancy, we lose another day on that, on the bond payment at the end. So, bonds are 20 years, the TIF was 23 years. So, that's why there's a little bit of a gap between 20 and 23. But six, we're about six months short on the last bond.
And the reason I ask is because, and Mayor's not here tonight, but he would be the first to tell you that there are hundreds of scientists and whatnot from around the world that want to buy these condos, the sooner you can build them. So, if there's any way to break ground, anything sooner than April of next year?
And that's really what the goal is with this. By shifting some of the responsibility to Shodin, is we, if this podium is the size of the project site and this remote happens to be where the contamination is, we can go in and remove that while the IEP A is reviewing it. We can be building and working over on this side of the podium undisturbed. So, we think we're making up time doing it simultaneously versus city comes in, removes this, waits for the IEP A to say, all clear, Shodin, now move in and start construction. So, that's the overall objective. And that's the big question of do we really want to take, do we want to be on title for a dirty site? Do we want to take, assume the responsibility? And that's been a lot of the discussion between what I refer to as our other partner. I said day one, when we were here, we were going to be partners. And we found, yep, it's a little bit tough sometimes in a partnership, but it was a tough issue and we think we've got through it.
So, this is an off-ramp for you and you're not taking it?
It, you're correct. It is an off-ramp and we're still here. We're interested. It's a tough issue. We've worked through it and want to continue forward. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Nick?
Question on the indemnity.
Yes.
Walk me through that because once they start doing remediation, do they then take on that liability?
Not for anything that existed on the site prior to its conveyance to the developer. So, for instance, we're expecting that 90% plus of the entire redevelopment site is going to be excavated because the public parking garage is going to be built down into the bedrock in its footprint. So, there might be something remaining on the edge if in the future contamination were found in those soils on the very edge of the redevelopment site. That would represent the future risk for liability.
And by future, you mean after this thing's built? So...
If it, but the developer has the, the developer has the burden of proving that that was there prior to.
And their remediation process needs to go through, has an approval process?
Yes. The IEP A is going to approve our RAP.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry, and you, the city, will have an inspector, a third-party environmental inspector out there that in essence is saying, that scoop of dirt has to go. And then, he has to manifest that scoop of dirt going to that special landfill that Laura has identified. So, it's a lot more detailed than if the city in another case has done time and material work where somebody's documenting, you know, hours or materials used. All of this has to be manifested material leaving the site. So, we don't want to remove anything that we're not going to get reimbursed for. You want to make sure that you're only paying for the contaminated material that's leaving. So, one of the bigger issues that we were trying to draw a very fine line, and that is, the day that title transfers, technically, we're absorbing or picking up some liability that most developers would say, no way. I don't want to be in the chain of title to a contaminated site. That's what the bank is also saying, and that's why they wanted that, the indemnity agreement, that there is some risk that, let's say, the building gets built and there's some, somehow, there's some material found. We have to prove, as Laura had indicated, that that material was there prior to the day of title transfer of the property. So, there are some scientific ways to do that, but hopefully, we're never going to get to that, to that point.
Well, just, other than the IEP A, it has kind of a third-party effect. There's a conflict there. Because for, from a liability standpoint, why leave that 10% there? Get it all out. Because the more you leave, the more liability we have. So, the more you leave, the less cost there is for you. So, there's kind of a conflict there, but there's a third party to oversee and we're overseeing. So, I get it.
And then, we also have our environmental consultant who is testing ahead of the excavation. So, as, they're staying on the edge of the excavation to determine, now we've left the field of contamination.
And ideally, we're trying to get to that NFR, no further remediation, that the IEP A wants to issue. So, we want that. I think you want that, to say that your plate was clean when you transferred the property. And the bank, the lender, wants to say, there's no issue on the property. So, we as lenders don't have any liability.
No, I get it. I mean, anytime you're taking on the liability, there's a little bit of uncomfortableness, but...
And you have that now regardless if you sign any of these because you're in the chain of title.
It was in the original agreement.
Right. But along those lines, well, I answered. I'm good. Thank you.
You know, you raised an issue, Nick. If I could just say, it would not be outside the realms of possibility for, as Shodin is excavating, that there is a tank down in there that we don't know about. But that too is a liability that always existed for us.
But is there anything that goes, the, any, either the consultants or the government that comes in and oversees it, is there any, a time that they sign off and we're kind of relieved, like, yeah, it looks good? Or there's always a little bit?
Yes, and that is the NFR, but the NFR is for the specific issue to which it applies.
I mean, it comes to the conveyance, right?
Right.
We convey you to property. Now, it's on you to prove it's ours.
Correct.
The contaminant. And if you are unsuccessful, you own it.
Correct.
Scott?
So, going to questions one and two, regardless if the Shodin company is doing this, this is something we're going to have to deal with regardless, correct? I mean, we've got contaminated soils. If ABC, if this for some reason doesn't go through, ABC Company comes in, we've got to deal with the remediation. The fact of the matter is, and it's part, it's TIF eligible, correct, as far as reimbursement? And the second thing is the environment, environmental indemnification. Again, regardless of who it is who comes in, they're going to want to be indemnified. I mean, the bank's going to want it. So, I mean, to me, it's kind of what Dan goes to, said to. Those two, first two questions are, we have to deal with them.
Right. I mean, this was a standard agreement from the bank.
Yes. Yeah, that's where the EIA stemmed from. I've never dealt with one other than signing one for a bank ourselves. And we went to the bank and said, give us the EIA you want the city to sign, and we passed it along.
Anyone else in the council have a question? Oh, sorry?
I believe in the sale of real estate as well. I think the seller always has that responsibility, no matter what the real estate deal is.
Anyone else?
This is very interesting to me because on a much smaller scale, I owned an old house that had oil tanks underneath that I had no idea they were there. Oh, they found them. And then, you know, before the house could be sold, they had to be removed, the soil had to be remediated, it had to be tested by the government. It was, it's just what you have to do. I mean, and I had no idea. They were there from the late 1800s. When I bought the house, no one noticed, but when I sold the house, the regulations had changed. So, this to me has always been a no-brainer for me. It's like, it's our soil, it's contaminated, we better do something about it. And living in an old manufacturing river town, it just makes sense that we're, there's a lot of things that we don't know about under the soil.
I think then we need to do this and get it done because at least now we have a revenue instrument through the TIF to pay for this. If we don't do it now, we're going to have to come up with money somehow to mediate this. And so, I think we should get it done.
Marty?
Yeah, I think going to that point, it's the same thing that Dan brought up with the amount of money that's left by the end of that '23. We're now adding this cost into that. And we already, we're told tonight, there is a six-month gap. Is there a six-month gap without including this remediation or including the remediation?
I would say without. There's still the six-month gap. But that when we did the financial analysis, a value was used for the expected assessed value of the units that we felt was conservatively low because it was more important for us to be able to say it will, the increment will be at least.
Correct. And that's the part that Dan had mentioned about the financing, to want to make sure that, so we own it, we have a moral responsibility as an entity to remove and remediate that land. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. But who pays for it ultimately is always what's going to be the most impactful. We as a community are going to be paying for that. It's either going to be on the residence or is this project going to be paying for that? Either way, it's money that we're going to have to pull in from somewhere to pay for that at some point.
With the project, there's the potential that that is with the increment. Chris Easton has a comment. Do you want to come over to the microphone, Chris? Thank you.
I just wanted to remind the council that we have a backup SSA on the project. So, in the event we don't meet all the incremental revenues required to pay off the bond, the special service area kicks in. That assessment is on only this property. So, the developer will still be responsible, or if he sells it to a successor owner, whoever is going to be owning the property, they'll be assessed the special service area tax at a rate that will bring in the necessary income to pay off the debt.
And then, in addition to that, the developer has said if the SSA is insufficient, that the developer makes up the difference there. And also, in the beginning, when the bonds are first issued, in the last amendment to the RDA, the developer accepted that they would make the early, what we're calling, gap payments where there isn't increment, but the, there's a bond payment to be made.
So, all of those belt and suspenders things that we had originally talked about, that this project pays for itself, the benefit, the financial benefit for this project is this is an unexpected cost that must be borne by the city, no matter what. Here is a remedy or a means for revenue to coming paying for that instead of residence.
Right.
It would not be on the general tax base of the city or the general fund of the city to pay it. It would come out of the TIF or the backup SSA would cover it.
Anyone else from the council?
Susan, before you go on to the ordinances, I think that might conclude the discussion at this point, but let's open it up to the public.
That's what I was just going to do, Dave.
So, if anybody from the public would like to come up and address us regarding these three items here, whether it be the discussion on what we just had discussion on or the next two ordinances, now would be a great time.
And this is, we're having a discussion on whether or not the city should pay for the remediation, whether, and so, it's basically the remediation ordinance as well as then the amended, and then the indemnification, and then further the restated new development agreement. So, those are the three topics. This is not a conversation about should it be developed or not. Sylvia, please state your name for the record.
Sylvia Keppel, 1420 Begaire.
Sylvia Keppel, 1420 Becker Avenue. Now, it's stated in the memo, and I don't want, don't want you to forget this, that there is the possibility another project can go there that would not tap into the contaminated soil. If it doesn't take up three-quarters of the block, it may not, it would not have to tap into the contaminated soil, and would not possibly require remediation if you leave it alone. So there is that possibility. So if you do decide to not go through with the contamination remediation, then you have an off-ramp to get out of this project. There's no cost to the taxpayers if you get out now, and you could entertain other possibilities for that area that, that aren't quite so grandiose. Shodin pushed you to the time limit, and now there's a rush. It was Shodin that made the differences. I don't want you to make hasty decisions like Prairie State. Prairie State, you were given a time crunch, bad, bad decisions were made. I don't want bad decision being made here. And this is just a mess. There are other towns with messes by Shodin, Aurora for one. At what point, now, at what point will Shodin be given the property, conveyed the title to the property? Are you talking before he can, starts the contamination remediation?
It will be before they start the demolition and excavation, and it is going to be close in time to when the building permit is ready to be issued.
So then he will have the ownership of the property. What happens if something happens that the project does not go forward, or there's more glitches?
So also, thank you for bringing that up, because one of the things that we did forget to mention in terms of the belt and suspenders is that, two things. That there is a construction bond on the project, so that in the event the developer is unable to follow through with the obligation to build the project, the bond would provide us with the funding to be able to continue that project and see it through to its fruition. And in addition to that, the developer is also required to maintain insurance on the entire project, so that if for some reason it's destroyed, it can be rebuilt.
And how much notice, since this is an L L C, how much notice is, has to be given if the L L C decides to fold and not maintain that insurance policy?
It would go to whoever is the, all of those things are obligations that would go to whomever becomes the owner of that property.
Okay. Lost my train, I thought they had one more point, but I don't remember what that was. I will guess I will have to, I didn't write down, I'll have to leave that there. But I, I urge you to reconsider this project, and, oh, and the final point is, would you please consider waiting until after the April 2 election, and the new council is seated to decide whether or not, to, to, if you're going to go forward on this? Because I think the people in this town might want to have a say in that, and this election could make a difference. So instead of making decision, and when you're going out, especially there's three aldermen who are leaving, I ask that you postpone your vote on this until after the April 2. It's not that much longer, considering especially that you're talking about breaking ground next year in April. Thank you.
You know, Sylvia, I got to address that. I got to address a couple of things. One is, it's my understanding that Shodin did not push us to the last minute on this, okay? You just heard that the city staff and, and the developer have been working together on this project for months, and that things have been going along, and fi, stuff has been filed with the E P A to get this process going. So Shodin hasn't been pushing this project back. This is a long process that takes a long time. All right, so don't be saying things that aren't true. Secondly, no, let me finish. Secondly, your, your, your suggestion to push this back until after the April election, let me ask you something, Sylvia. What makes you think whoever gets elected to sit in these seats is going to have any more knowledge, or as much knowledge, as the people that are leaving these seats?
The difference is, how much do you listen to the people that they represent?
What makes you think that the people that are sitting in these seats are not listening to the people they represent?
Well, isn't that what, the point you had made before, when, a lot of people have made it with the home rule referendum, we elect our, and people say, we like to elect our, our representatives to make decisions for us. And so now we have an election, and we have some contested seats. You don't always have contested seats. You have contested seats where the, the opponents have differing views on this project. And this is an off-ramp for those who...
That's, that's government at its best. That's government at its best. There's been an election since this whole process started, I think. And, and, you know, that's just the way it works. There's nothing saying that anybody that comes in here is going to have any more knowledge than the people leaving. In fact, I believe that the people coming in here would have less knowledge, and not be able to make as good a decision on the votes that would be in front of them as the people that are leaving.
You know, it would be really nice if...
So I have to say that I totally disagree with your train of thought on this.
Well, there, there are things that you've kept hidden.
Let me finish. When you're talking about Shodin stalling a project, what you're trying to do is stall project.
He stalled it, he, he claimed that he didn't know about the bedrock, and how much it would cost to go into the bedrock. He knew very well how much it would cost.
Sure, he knew there was bedrock there, but he didn't know to what extent.
And that's when half the council flipped on that.
You're not an engineer, you're not a developer, you don't know the process.
Okay, so what's going to keep him from saying that, that he runs up the, the costs for the contamination remediation now, since he's responsible for that, say, gee?
He can't run up the cost for the contamination remediation, because we're going to have a third-party consultant representing us on the site that is going to make that determination, not him.
Okay, so he won't get to the point where he says, gee, I didn't realize it would cost this much? And it's going to cost more now?
It could cost a million dollars. We don't know the exact extent. We're estimating best on our calculate, the environmental consultants' calculations that we have hired to do all the testing, and to try to refine it as close as we can.
I think I would feel better to have a third-party in there.
We do have a third-party in there.
Alderman?
Gary, you had something to say?
Do the cleanup.
The scope of, as Laura indicated earlier, that we've done extensive site testing, so we feel we have a very good handle on the scope of remediation that is necessary. That's what's then been compiled into the remediation action plan, which has then been submitted to the state. The state will, in turn, we anticipate, approve our remediation action plan. Then, as the steps go on, Shodin will actually go out and seek bids for remediation following that remediation action plan. Those bids actually get submitted to us for our kind of conjecture and, and approval as well with them. So that prevents Shodin from saying, oh, it's, you know, $5 million. Well, no, it's only $500,000, or whatever the case might be. So we have that checks and balance upfront. We know the scope, we know the cost upfront. Now, maybe as we go along, we hit that unknown tank. That's a possibility. No one in this room can say that we can, that we will or will not. That's where the third-party comes in, are, representing us out in the field to say, oh, here's a condition we didn't anticipate. We are representing the city, this is the scope, this is what needs to be done, we keep a cap and a control on those costs. In no time is Shodin just going to be handed the keys to his caterpillar, go out there and do whatever he wants to do, and then turn around and send us the bill. That's not how it works.
Thanks, Gary. Dave, did you have anything more to add?
No, I think...
And, and as to transparency, you have not been very transparent. I would like to know more.
Sylvia? We have, we have gone through this many times. That's not part of this discussion tonight. You've said what you had to say about the remediation.
Alderman Brown brought up about knowledge. Give us the knowledge. Release the closed-session minutes that we have requested by FOIA, and that you refuse to release. Please, release those closed-session minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to say one thing, as long as we're on the subject. There was an election. There was a group that wanted to restrict the city of home rule power, and the people of this community spoke and said what they thought about it. They know we have the information, they know we make decisions with the information we're given, and that we listen to the people, and they voted by an overwhelming margin with this city council against that group.
Yes. Well, no, they, they voted to keep, not against a group, they voted to keep, to give you, they, they trust their representatives, but they also trust in the election process. So we have an election process coming up.
Even though they were promised by the opposing side that if they won, the one North Washington project would go away?
We're getting off subject. Does anybody else have anything?
That was never promised, that was, there was given option. It was, give people, give people choices, I guess. Give people choices until after April.
Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
Come on up to the podium, please.
My name is Charlie Coyle, 1311 Town Avenue in Batavia. Laura, did you say, I'm confused about the cost of this. What did you say the cost that's on the table right now in front of us? What are we looking at?
So initially, they gave us a cost of...
Who they, who they, first of all?
Our environmental consultant.
Okay.
Who did the environmental testing. And at first, they said around $750,000, but now, since they went back and they were be able, they're able to more exactly triangle where these areas are, they're saying it's between $395,000 and $590,000. And that represents the cost to excavate the material, and put it in the truck, take it to the special landfill, and then those are the costs of tipping it at the special landfill. So that's the, the cost that...
Okay, so I'll look at possibly $500,000, okay? The city was going to do the excavation initially, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we were going to do, we were responsible for demolition and environmental remediation, not all of the excavation.
No, but I'm saying, you were going to do the excavation to get the contaminated soil onto trucks, and then move it to the special landfill, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But now Shodin is going to do that.
Right.
Correct? So is that cost for Shodin to do that labor, provide that equipment and that work, is that included in the $500,000?
Yeah, that's exactly the work that is being hired to be done. So the developer will be the one who is hiring the contractor, but the city is going to be paying the bills for what is the environmental remediation.
But I'm saying, his labor, his equipment, is included in the $500,000, or is there more money coming in on top of the remediation of the soil that's going to be added to the $500,000? Because we were going to do it.
No, I think you're confused, because the cities, the city's diggers, nor Shodin's diggers were ever going to do it. It was always going to be a third-party company coming in to dig out the soil and remediate it.
Okay, so the city wasn't going to do it?
No, we don't have the ability to go out and...
I appreciate that, but I just heard that the city was going to do it.
No, no, no. We, we just talk about it in generality.
That's why I'm asking the question.
No, no, no. It was never our equipment, our people. It was always a third-party who specializes in remediation.
I'm okay with that. That's, I understand that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So the labor and the equipment to do the excavation is included in the $500,000, correct?
Correct.
So there wouldn't be any additional charges that we would be facing?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Marty?
There's no additional charges. The only difference between the city going out and having someone do it versus the project developer doing it are the efficiencies gained and the, the timing of everything.
Right.
It's a more efficient use of, of them doing the project and maintaining the concern that we do have about the timing of the TIF structure.
Right.
The TIF repayment. Sorry, I'm still recouping.
Pneumonia is no excuse.
No, it's not.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience have anything to say? Yes. I can't see behind the podium and the things, so you have to... That's okay. Your name for the record, please.
Kevin Callahan, 801 Manchester. I agree with you, Alderman, about remediation. It's got to be done. Whatever you have to do to sell the property off, even if you build a different building or this project, whatever, is going to be required anyway. But at the same time, the question I would have, after, after I've worked on remediated sites before, one of the biggest ones was in West Chicago. Is there something in place to monitor the areas around remediated sites? Not necessarily subject to this podium or the site, but the neighborhood around, not including and away from, the water systems or anything else. You got a hundred-year rank, where is that water going to go? It's going to tear, carry that, that's contaminated soils with it? It's something that happens. You have, you can't deny it. And if you are going to monitor it, how long? Is there extra cost involved with it? And who is going to be responsible for it? Because the cost that you have right now is the cost you have. Is there an extra cost? Is that going to jack that up even more? If it is, what's going to happen with the, the budget as far as that goes? That's all I'm really concerned with.
Thank you. Gary?
So the remediation, remediation action plan addresses things like erosion control in order to make sure that runoff from the site is contained. This particular site has lead contamination. So it's unlike a petroleum product or a chemical from dry cleaners that may migrate through the ground, through, through groundwater flow. Lead's a, lead's a heavy metal, so lead is not going to migrate by becoming dissolved and flowing through the, through the ground. So that's all covered, but those issues are, are all great questions, and those are, that's what all goes into the remediation action plan. Are all those, that's all the things the state's going to look for.
Great, thank you so much. Marty?
To Mr. Callahan's part, isn't that a pro in the size of this project? Because a project of the sites is going to go in, take it all away, and it's gone now. It's no longer there in, as far as what he's saying. So in this situation, if there was a concern about the size, it is because of the size that we are able to remediate and take this away.
Dan?
A question for Laura. I know that we reviewed some meeting minutes, the issue of transparency was brought up. I know that we released a handful of things, but we're kind of at a place right now where we probably could review some additional meeting minutes.
Yes, but the meeting minutes that the parties are interested in have to do with the underlying property transactions.
Until the transaction...
And since we have not conveyed the property at this point, it was deemed inappropriate to release those at this point.
And if I remember, that we discussed after the transaction was complete, we would review the minutes again...
That's correct.
To, to release.
That's correct.
Okay. Not that there's any bombshells, but it'd just be nice to cross that T and dot that I for.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Dave?
I'd just like to remind everybody that certainly there's always that option of leaving the contamination there, but that doesn't relieve you of the liability. In addition, now that you know that it's there, and something were to happen, I think you may suffer some additional consequences in failing to do anything about it. And lastly, if you did leave it there and somebody goes and builds on another part of the site, and somehow that material now gets spread or moved through whatever activities around the site, there's, could be additional costs and ramifications with that. So just another, another point about, do you lose or do you minimize your risk by leaving it there? I don't think you do.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so that was our discussion. The first part of this is ordinance 1911, environmental indemnification agreement for one Washington place. And so would someone like to make a motion to send a city council ordinance 1911?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Chan Zed, second by, I'm sorry, McFadden. Can we have a roll call, please? Chan Zed?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
And Stark?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, and so the second part of this is then, would someone like to make a motion to send ordinance 1912, the second amended and restated R D A to city council?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Chan Zed, second by McFadden. Callahan?
Just want to have some, just a discussion point on that one. As we just saw, we were unanimous in the decision on that. And I think that's important to remember, because while we did have a tie-tie vote on that before, it is also a respect for the democratic process that we took a vote on the merits of those points. And while I was on the losing side, where we have become as a country, you don't use past votes as recrimination or try to get your way after the point. Dave should be sitting here as point of the vote, because he has been sitting here the entire, the entire time. It is very concerning to me when we do not allow people to speak to try to change votes after they are already made. They should be made on the merits of the, sorry, I'm still trying to breathe. Still trying to take our votes on the merits of the legislation and the policy that is before us. That is fundamental democracy. To do anything otherwise is to subvert the will of what we all are supposed to do, which is represent people. And we represented people on our former votes. I still stick with my former decision based on what was going on, on that. I have a new point before us, which we have a responsibility as a community to clean up the, the, the poisons that were left in here by others before us. But because it was done before us and we know it now, it is our obligation to fix it. And if there is an obligation to fix it, it's to do it in the most fiscally responsible manner, which in this case, I believe, because we have a project, because it will remediate it, and because we have a repayment mechanism that will not be borne by the current residents, it is the just thing to do and it is what we should be doing. And it shouldn't matter if you're sitting here today or sitting here in two months, those decisions are what should guide us as a community.
Thank you, Marty.
Well said.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Will you please take a roll call on that also? Chan Zed?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
And Stark? Aye. So that motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Item number twelve, ordinance nineteen dash ten, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia, of Kane and DuPage counties, Illinois, to borrow funds for the water pollution control loan program. Alderman, Atack?
Yes, so last November, the council passed ordinance eighteen sixty-five approving, allowing us to get an IEPA loan to pay for area three storm, storm sewer separation. And the application was sent and then the IPA determined, and we were gonna use general funds to pay for that. And then the, after the application was sent to the IEPA, they determined they prefer that we pledge sewer revenues rather than the general funds for a dedicated source of revenue. So Peggy has created an ordinance nineteen dash ten, authorizing IEPA loan for sewer separation, indicating this. And do you wanna talk about more of the details? We can still use.
This won't change how we'll be repaying the loan. It just changes the criteria. The IEPA is used to issuing loans strictly to water and sewer. They aren't used to cities contributing their general fund money for repayment. And so they said they just would prefer that, they see an ordinance that they normally do.
Okay. Are there any questions? Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to council the approval of ordinance nineteen dash ten, authorizing an IEPA loan for sewer separation?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Lucy. Next item is the presentation on the annual update for the report on the finance. Laura, do you wanna start us out with that?
Sure. Tonight, we have two departments, the finance department and also our information systems department. Peggy is going to give her presentation first. It's a, kind of a follow-up to the information that she provided as part of the budget, but we also wanted to have a, a discussion about the reserves as well. Okay. So the purpose of these annual reports is just to highlight the accomplishments that happened in the previous year and then also to present what things the department is gonna be working on in twenty nineteen as well. So I'll turn it over to Peggy.
Thank you. And just one other item in regards to that nineteen ten, I did forward the version that was drafted by bond council. I got it Sunday night late, and so I sent that out to you today and we'll also have that posted in the public folder. So my presentation tonight, I have two different sections, one with just a brief overview of where the numbers were for the end of the year. It doesn't go into a lot of detail. We've already posted the December report with unadjusted audit numbers. We're in the midst, midst of preparing for the audit now, so even these numbers are not the final numbers. Invoices are still coming in for services that were done in twenty eighteen. For some reason, engineers bill very slowly, and so we still have bills to pay, so these numbers will change for the final audit, but it gives you a good idea of where we ended up. So our total spending for twenty eighteen was one hundred and seventeen point five million, with purchase power being the largest portion at thirty-nine million and capital at thirty million. It's actually the largest year that we've ever had for capital spending as a city since I've been here, eighteen years. For, then the largest percentage following that is for wages. We had revenues of one hundred and one point three million. This does not include IEPA loan funds. Those are not considered a revenue because they go onto the balance sheet as an obligation right away, but we did receive fifteen point seven million in loan drawdowns for the wastewater treatment plant. Other revenues, the utilities represent the largest amount of revenues that flow through the city at sixty million. And this is for all funds for the city. And the property tax that's included there includes the tips. So that is in the eight point seven million. This may be a little difficult to see, but it's a budgetary comparison for the two thousand eighteen budget, two thousand eighteen actual, and then two thousand seventeen actual in the, the pink color there to show you how we did budget-wise by category for wages and supplies, contracts for all funds with the city. This isn't posted on the website right now, but we will have them all posted, so you can look at this later in more detail if you like. And then we have the same comparison for all funds for revenues. Our revenues came in very close to the budget and actually the same for our spending for the year twenty eighteen. And then I did a comparison for the general fund because it represents the, the largest portion of operations of the city, showing the budget to actual for the last two years. We did have an, about a seven hundred thousand dollar surplus right now for the general fund due to decreased spending and slightly higher revenues for twenty eighteen. Outstanding debt did go up substantially this year because of the drawdowns on the IEPA loan. It's at sixty-four million with the sewer representing the largest share there. And that is not the final, because as you know, we haven't finished that project completely and there, there will be further drawdowns that will go on as an obligation for the sewer fund. This does not show the principal payments we made, four principal payments that were made on January first of this year. This is as of twelve thirty-one. So it is slightly less than sixty-four million today. And this will be something I think that you'll like to go back to at a later date as well. It gives you a comparison. I put our neighbors in here of St. Charles and Geneva and then looked for other communities that were very close in population and EAV for size so that you could see what their revenues per capita are and expenditures per capita and then debt per capita. And last year, we were very close to Bloomingdale. We are again this year and also Westmont, very similar to our structure. I also included the budget size so you could see what their scope was. And then as far as accomplishments in twenty eighteen, we just received notice about three weeks ago that we received the two thousand seventeen CAFRA award from the GFOA for our financial reporting. We proposed and implemented a debt policy last year. The twenty nineteen budget and budget in brief takes a large portion of time. We had a lot of documents related and bond ordinances for IEPA loan applications. We submitted and processed sixteen million for the wastewater treatment plant in reimbursements. Thirty million tracked capital spending, which includes submitting grant reimbursements for various capital projects that are eligible for grant reimbursement, creating capital asset records so that they can be depreciated and ensuring sufficient cash flow for each of the funds. Our utility billing department issued one hundred and thirty-seven thousand utility bills and all of the issuance and collection and accounting for that flows through the finance office. We had fifteen grant submittals for different projects that we received one point three million in grant funds for. Updated the forms in the website for the one cent gas tax increase that was approved. We do, we, the finance department tracks arbitrage for our bond issues to make sure that we don't have any payment owed to the IRS. We manage the investment portfolio for the city, not the pension funds, but we had thirty-seven million in investments purchased, thirty-three million in investments matured. And one thing that was very nice, our investment income was nine hundred and seventy thousand this year, excuse me, compared to three hundred and sixty-four thousand in two thousand seventeen. So that was nice to see that really jump up. It shows you what a difference a little change in interest makes for your return. And we participated and assisted with various economic development incentives, recommended the rate increases for the utilities, managed the economic development grant for Suncast. And there were a couple of things we did not enjoy, but had to endure in two thousand and eighteen, the fishing incident that occurred at, at the beginning of two thousand and eighteen. We're still continuing with that and dealing with that. We did have cyber insurance that covered that, but that's hopefully something that will never occur again. And then the Home Rule Challenge, it was very time-consuming. There was a lot of work that was put into researching what the impact would be and responding to a lot of questions on that. So that was something that did take a lot of time for us this last year. And then for twenty nineteen, we certainly hope to receive the award for our CAFRA again. We will be preparing a use of reserves policy. That's something that I know that all of you are interested in, would like to talk about that. So that should be coming, hopefully as soon as we get through the month of March for our audit, we will have that to you. And also property tax policy as far as recommendations for something that we'll look at for preparing the levy each year. And we will be researching, we have been researching different companies that offer online bill presentment and payment in one place so that our residents and businesses can go to one site. Right now, they have to go to two sites, one to see their bill and one to pay it. So we'd like to have it be all in one place. And also, we're continuing to look at budget software options. We'll look at the utility rates for all three of the utilities. I'll be looking at amending the PPAF base. We've been very fortunate that we've had the PPF remain the same since two thousand and sixteen. So we'll be looking at maybe changing the structure of that. We'll be facilitating the IEPA loans for, we're in the process right now of doing an application for the water mains and then the nineteen ten that we're applying for, for the sewer separation and the storm sewer. We'll continue monitoring of the bond funds. There are a lot of regulations for how you spend the bond funds and we still have bond funds from the two thousand and seventeen bond issue. And then as far as some of the things from the strategic plan, I'll be working with Public Works on the funding policy for infrastructure, providing some long-term funding options for the river or a potential second bridge. Those are items that were specifically called out in the strategic plan. And then I'll provide some input on review of development incentive policy that economic development is working on. We are in the process of redesigning the website and I will be on that committee. And the twenty twenty budget and the budget in brief that was started this year with administration, it's a joint effort there, and we'll have that again this year. And then we will be implementing some additional fraud protections. It's something that is certainly on our radar all the time. Now that we have Office three sixty-five, we seem to get a lot more fishing incidents where they are trying to get somebody to respond. So those are just, we'll do some more training and then certainly implement whatever bank protections that we can. And then we'll continue managing the economic development grant for Suncast. It will be hopefully this last year and any other economic development grant agreements that may come up during the year. So that is all I had. I don't know if you had any questions for me?
Just a comment. Just to refresh us for the public mainly. People in your department?
How many people?
Yeah.
Um, there are, I know, three, four, five, six, seven, counting me.
All that we just watched, all that gets done every year is done by that main. I mean, to me, that's just amazing, that the budget, the numbers, all the activities that happen, happen with that staff. So I think we're really lucky and very fortunate that you run that department as well as it's run.
And understanding that three of the individuals are the utility billing department dedicated to that function and there are.
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand bills, though. And that's.
It's amazing.
That is amazing.
It is, it is a lot and there's a lot of accounting that goes into all of that, too. So thank you.
And every year, we audit it, we get, you know, reviewed by other groups and it all comes up okay. So I, I feel really good about that, that this staff has done the job that they've done the entire time that I've been on the council. And it's gotten better every year. It's easier to find things in the budget. People are easier, have an easier access time to find out the things they want to know, and I think it's very transparent to anybody out there when they wanna find something. So I really just wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will, as long as we're talking about the audit, the auditors are going to be here tomorrow and then they will be coming back in a month. You will have, I think, all received a letter from me at this point if you would please be sure and respond to the auditors. They need at least a certain percentage of responses from the city council in regards to some SAS requirements for statement on accounting standards are required to get that. So I appreciate if you return it.
I just wanna say, I do enjoy the budget in brief, too. I think that's very helpful for a quick review.
Yes, that, that is something definitely that Laura's been wanting the last two years and I just didn't pull the trigger, so.
We got there.
We got there.
Just a couple of comments. In this rising interest rate environment, you've done a really good job of managing the investments, so thank you and continue to do that. I'm happy to see that you're moving forward with software, finally, to get yourself off of those Excel spreadsheets.
Well, I'm researching. I don't know if we'll actually get over that hump this year, but.
Continue moving forward. I just wanna continue to encourage that. And then also for being proactive on fraud-related issues. Are we like on, are we, do we do positive pay for checking accounts and things like that? Are we?
We are just implementing that right now. We hadn't felt the need to do it. We hadn't felt the need to do it.
We're there now.
Until now, because it is pretty costly to do, but now it's just not worth it to take a chance on not having it in place, so.
Thank you for staying proactive on that.
Lucy, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So talk about having small staff. But we thank City Council for addressing that in the IT department this year. With the addition of that staff, we'll make it possible for them to be able to get to some of the action items that you'll see in Howard's report. He and his team do an amazing job of not only planning for and implementing the hardware and software that we're using, but then to respond to the day-to-day concerns of individual employees who might be experiencing, you know, some outage that is a concern for them. Only you guys are always there within minutes to help us out. I'm always amazed.
We try. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So just beginning, I do have a couple of redundant slides from last time. I'll try and go through them quickly, provided this keyboard works. There we go. Provided I hit the right key. Just a reminder about some of the things that we take care of. I'm not going to go through a whole list. I'm going to go through the first few slides pretty quickly and then get to some of the other areas where I've bolded a couple of items that I think maybe there are issues or projects that you guys might want to hear. And of course, feel free to interrupt and if you have any questions or comments about this. We do take care of quite a bit of equipment. As you can see, we've added more cameras this year, which I think is a good thing. We've added some around the city hall. I don't know if anybody has noticed, but there's more cameras on the outside of the building now. Some of the major applications that we've been taking care of, we've, I've kind of bolded some of the ones that we've spent some time on over the past, let's say, six months from the last presentation that I gave. We did do some work with our permit system. We just upgraded our utility billing and tax system. We also updated AutoCAD for our Public Works Division, a couple of people at the city hall. We are continuing to work on the SCADA systems as we move them into a new architecture. Microsoft Office 365 and Exchange Online, it was a big project. It seemed to go pretty well. We're still kind of getting used to some of it. Every day with Office 365, it changes. And I think I was just talking to Laura about it today, some days something's here, the next day it's there. So it's kind of a moving target as far as, you know, figuring out what it's doing and where we're going with it. Part of the utility billing update was getting some interfaces for PSN and for the Express Bill Pay, which helps people online. And then we pushed out a Microsoft, or I'm sorry, a Trend Micro Antivirus update recently. And here, you know, we've always tried to build on our strengths, such as a stable environment. We always try and make sure that we're using funding that's appropriated to us efficiently. We always want to make sure that we're prepared for disasters the best we can. Some of the problems we're still having, of course, and I think having an extra person's going to help this year is the project schedule and completion. And of course, updates of hardware and software could be a little more timely. Of course, increased mobility for employees and for services that are, we're trying to get out into the field more and give people the information they need where they need it. That's, that's a goal. This slide just talks a little bit about our priorities within the department and within the city and what we try and take care of. And I think when you look at one and two, the protecting our data, our security, our current systems, hardware, software, we definitely think having that third person this year is going to help us. So we're really looking forward to that, and hopefully that will help us with some of the new projects and some of the new initiatives as we move forward. I know that some of the accomplishments we've had with GIS, Mike's done a lot of work with a lot of different people. He really works with the entire city. And for one person, if you think about all the assets that he's in charge of or has to help people maintain, it's a daunting task. I mean, there are hundreds of thousands of assets out there. And I know that he's worked on things like the boundary agreements, the annexation for EAV analysis. He did do the Bulldogs Unleashed. He works on a lot of maps for Chris and Chris. I know they, they've been to a couple of shows and had to bring some information, so he's put together or helped them put together some really nice displays. We did do a phone line analysis, and we were able to knock a couple thousand dollars off our phone bill per month. Couple, I think, I think that happened about three months ago. We had some concerns about some of the phone lines, and I started digging a little bit deeper and was able to find some things that weren't right and took that up with AT&amp;T. And lo and behold, there is savings that could be made. We are working on our landline connections right now and trying to negotiate a new service or a continued service for what we use in-house for our phones. One thing I will say that's not bolded is the SCADA infrastructure. We did, we were able to get servers up and storage devices up. So we're helping Byron and his staff move forward, as well as Jeremy, and trying to get that moving with them and stay up to date with the project schedule so they don't lag behind. We have fully implemented now 90-day password updates with an automated reset tool.
Which Howard had to endure much histrionics and nasty.
A little bit of grief.
But it's the right thing to do, so we did it.
It was, and, you know, I think that's common practice in most industries, and I think 90 days was pretty liberal, so, and.
And we're surviving.
Yeah, we are, and we will. And the bottom item, when the new Windows got put in, we had an issue with cellular coverage in the building, so we had to talk with Verizon and see what we can do. So Todd was able to come up with a solution, working with Verizon. So if you see a little box in the mailroom that's just kind of sitting on the wall and you think, what is that? That's what it is. It helps Verizon cellphone coverage. Current projects that we're working on, and some of these projects are multi-year projects, and, you know, I'm hoping, again, having that, that third person is going to help some of these move a little quicker. But we are working, still working with the conversion of electric for the Viewworks program. And part of that is working with GIS and having a plan with how, and Gary could probably expand on this at some point, having a plan with how accounts are designated within GIS for different assets. And it took a while to really understand what needed to be done and working with people like Bob and Brian over in the electric division. We're hoping this year we'll be able to get an online service portal up and running. We're working on asset valuation. We're, you know, hoping that that will move forward within the first half of the year. We do have some, we have a person right now, and I think I mentioned this before, using a mobile device in the field for LAMA, our permitting system. I am working currently, I have them sitting on my desk charging up and trying to get those out to some of the other employees in community development, and also one in engineering who does some inspections and could use access to LAMA in the field, so we're trying to get those out. Working with Wendy on the IS technician recruitment, we're, again, really looking forward to having another person being, being able to help us and help employees. I think for the first six months or so, that person is probably going to be, let's say, mine and Todd's number one support. Thinking of the right word to say here, but we're going to spend a lot of time with that person, let's just say that. It's going to take a while for that person to get up and get going and understand what we really have going on around here. We're planning on kicking off another security awareness campaign so people understand about phishing, about some of the attacks that happen through email. And yes, there are quite a bit more now that we are on Exchange Online and Office 365. We're, we're really looking also forward to having PC and laptop refresh. We're a little behind on that schedule, and I know some people are struggling using some of the computers that they have. So again, having that third person, we're hoping that's one of the first things he's going to spend a number of months working on and try and get people up to date with new computers and also upgrading to Windows 10. Just some pending projects, redundant internet connection comes to mind. We really could use that. We did get a new internet service provider, and we may need another new service provider soon, but been having some issues. And I believe the outage we had tonight, according to our service provider, had to do with a fiber cut on 294. There is some maintenance that's going to happen tonight between 11:00 and 4:00 a.m. They're going to, they have a window of maintenance that they've pre-planned, so we'll see what happens. We will speak to them about some of the outages that we have had. In future considerations, document management has been a problem for years that we would love to address at some point. I know revenue is definitely a concern with bringing on another person, but I, right now, every department is kind of managing their records. People are doing whatever they can to get things onto a hard drive rather than in a file cabinet, and I think I applaud that effort. But it would be nice to have an organized system to do that, where other people would have access to those records as well. Mike has mentioned the need for the GIS tech person to help with some of the field asset collection and data validation. He said a part-time person, an intern, whatever help he could get, he would love. So that may come up during the next budget season. If we can do it, great. If not, we'll see what else can be done to help Mike. Challenges moving forward in the short term, of course, the technician training, Windows 7 end of life, and also, we would really love to be able to get people more acquainted with Office 365. There's a lot of features out there, and we'd love to be able to offer more training or be more assistance for people. And we just, we just think that there's more opportunity out there with Office 365 that maybe we're not taking advantage of right now, and we really want to get the full use of that program. And we have used it, have used some of the new features, some of the file sharing, some of the remote support options, and it's really helped a lot of people. So with that said, does anyone have any questions? I'm sorry, I'm trying to get through this quickly, so. Questions, comments?
Again, I'll echo what I said before. The amount of hardware, software, and everything else that this department has to deal with, all the equipment they have to deal with, all the different departments and places they have to go to do this, I can't, I still can't believe two people do this. I really can't. So kudos to you guys. I really have to thank you for that. And for as few times as we have internet go out or anything else go wrong, you guys rise to the occasion and get it fixed right away.
Thank you. I have a, I have a really good staff. Couldn't be happier with the guys I work with.
I just want to second what is being said there. I mean, if you backed up a few slides there, just the sheer number of different and vastly different applications that are being supported, the spec for each one of those applications of hardware, of course, being a little unique in and of themselves, hats off to you guys. Seriously, hats off. I look, I'm very happy to see a person coming aboard to give you some assistance.
Mark, you got any comments? You're kind of an IT expert here.
Given that we have over 200 people in IT just in the U.S., the scale's a little different, but yeah, that is a lot of work for three people. I can't, I can't imagine that. Doing what we have to do on a day-in, day-out basis and doing all that with just three is just still astonishing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Albert.
Okay.
Thanks, Howard.
Okay. Laura, let's go on to project status, item 14.
Okay, at our last meeting, Chief Dykey was talking about renewing our agreement with the Batavia Fire Protection District, and there was a question about sort of an outlier area on the map that was bounded by Tanner Road and Deer Path Road. And as a matter of fact, that is, that should not have been included as part of the Batavia Fire Protection District. It's actually the North Aurora Fire District. So I went in GIS and took a look at the tax bill, and that's a North Aurora Fire District. And then also, just some updates on some of the projects that we've been working on. As you know, the city works closely with Main Street on promotion of the 2019 Restaurant Week. So it's going to be March Madness from March 17th through the 21st, and marketing materials are being developed and are in production right now to send out to people so that hopefully everyone will avail themselves of the opportunity to get some discounts and perhaps try some restaurants that they've never been to before. Also, we've received permits that Target is seeking for interior renovation of their space, and work is continuing on the Windmill Landing Site. That's the senior development that's off of Hawks Drive. You drive by there, you wouldn't know it was the dead of winter. They're just continuing to work on it all throughout this winter. We also have issued permits for the Nagel Industrial Park spec buildings. The completed plat has now been submitted, and staff is working on recording the document. And, but in the meantime, we've issued them grading permits so that they can go ahead and start some of that initial site work. Continuing to review permits for metronet installations with three underground and three overhead permits that are in active review right now. The former Avenue Chevrolet Development had a public hearing on their plan proposal. That's proposed to be a Raising Canes restaurant. That happened on February 20th and received unanimous approval, and it'll be on the next COW meeting on March 5th. Also, Funway had a revised design review meeting in front of the Plan Commission on February 20th for some signing changes that they're making and some changes to their exterior facade. And again, those were unanimously approved, so the project is continuing. Work is continuing on all those restaurants that have been ongoing in downtown. We don't have a time for any of their open. We don't have a time for any of their openings, but we're very excited to see Boca Dito's Restaurant go into 109 East Wilson, Oak and Swine Restaurant go into 107 East Wilson and Riverside Pizza Restaurant opening at 142 West Wilson. I did see that Riverside has posted signs that they are looking for hiring staff at this point. So it sounds like their opening is probably going to be imminent. And then one thing that I wanted to discuss under projects is the very unfortunate incident that happened with the windmill outside here on the plaza. I mean, it kind of like just, on the one hand, really struck at my heartstrings because I picture coming to work every day and that's the sight I see as, as I pull into this building. But the other thing that I think of is, wow, I'm glad there wasn't somebody standing there.
And it didn't take out the bulldog.
So on Sunday, in the big windstorm, a huge gust of wind, because we have the cameras out here, we have it on film, a big gust of wind came through and the head of the windmill broke off and fell down onto the deck. A next blast of wind came through and whipped it off of the deck and it just smashed into pieces and was destroyed. So the question being, you know, this is something that's sort of one of the iconic views in our downtown. And on the flip side of that, you know, the, thank goodness there wasn't anybody standing there at the time, but I think at this point, probably staff should investigate what it would take to restore this windmill out here and then bring it back to you for a decision on either restoring the windmill as it exists or doing something that is some type of architecture slash art representation of that windmill that wouldn't have the same possibility of the head coming detached and crashing down on a public plaza. So we'll weigh those, those two things.
That being an asset, is that insured?
Yes, it would be insured as an asset of the city, but we'd still have to meet the deductible.
Sure.
Yes. Any other questions for me?
No questions, Laura?
Did anyone answer the phone over at the, at the Target? I went to go get some money from the Chase Branch ATM and I think I popped a tire or... that's, it's way, way worse than I, than I ever thought it was. I'm just curious if anyone answered the telephone, when you called?
We talked about it in our staff meeting today, but I don't think that we have had an opportunity to follow up on that parking lot issue yet. Scott, did you want to say anything in that regard?
No, we haven't, we haven't actually looked at it yet.
So that'll be something we'll be looking at.
I took photos today.
It's a minefield.
Yeah, that's what I hear, that some are this deep.
It's very bad.
You've got two different ownerships out there. You've got Target to their south wall and then it changes over to a group of gentlemen who I've never been too impressed with, who wanted this investment.
Yeah.
Don't seem to want to spend any money on it, never have, probably never will. So I think we need to get rough and tough with them and tell them it's time to move to parking lots.
With those type of anchors in there, there's people that are going to stop shopping at that Target.
It's probably not the actual Target lot.
They've always been willing to do it, but the other folks south of there are the ones that.
It's a lot to the south of that and that is really bad in that area.
Yeah, it's probably not the actual Target lot, it's probably the shopping center owners, they're separate owners.
No, I'm just, when I turn in, that just happens to always be the patch of road I cross over when I go to Target and that sucks, so.
I'm sorry.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. Item 15, others. Anybody have another? No others? Item 16, adjournment.
Some moved.
Motion by Solbadi, second by Stark, all in favor?
Aye.